Everyone, welcome back and this session is is going to be, well, it's recorded, this is our last session for the day. And we've got some heroes on here and we're going to see, we've got Mitch coming on a little bit later on, we've got Matt Medier, who's on and also Tim Munro will be coming on very shortly. But while you're there, Matt, do you just want to give everyone a bit of an update or a bit of an idea of how you've been going with this pepper? Can't say any of us have, you know, went down the track and thought this is going to be the way we're going to be through, you know, right from the start. I mean, I started off tax and then self-managed and sort of found that this calling coming from me around about five or six years ago, and it's been pretty successful again, it's very initial stages, which is fantastic because it means we all want to grow together. But how have you found it? How are you dealing with clients? And, and you know, what are the highs and the lows and some tips you can give for everyone?
Firstly, thanks, Grant, for giving me the opportunity to jump on board. Let me just give everyone a bit of a background. I'm a small boutique accounting firm. It's just me and one and a half VAs. So I'm by no means a massive big firm. That being the case, I was in the inaugural pepper course. So since then, as I look at my notes, revenue from your products is just over $69,000. Given the size of, well, it's small, the size of my firm, that's a fair bit of income.
Yeah, absolutely.
It certainly has placed my firm in a position that I probably didn't see myself in for the next couple of years. So that's what it's done to my firm. Very, very early on, in fact, whilst I was doing this three day course, I was emailing out to my clients, the leading member product, and had already sold about 10 or grand, 11 grands worth of that product alone by the time we'd finished our pepper course. That's how quick we can generate income from this product and the services that you guys provide through Lightyear. At the moment, I mean, ironically enough, I'm actually working on a husband and wife will. When my clients come on board now, flat out part of the onboarding process is all of the lightyear products. And we line them up in sequential order as to what needs to get done in priority order. And away we go. And typically, the last product of the suite is, is the will. And, and the very, very last product, once we've done the will, is the, the Moten Castle product. That's not for everybody, obviously, but that tends to be the last product that we then offer our clients.
How are you found with feedback?
So I'm going to share a story which really, it's a sad story. I had a client die. Healthy guy, dropped dead of a heart attack. Fortunately, we had all these, forty-eight, forty-nine.
Yeah, it's happening everywhere.
Yeah, just dropped dead. Sudden adult death syndrome, it's called. Fortunately, he had all of these products. So the son was able to take over the business straight away. The wife was the executor, her brother was the second executor. So we were able to completely transition into new ownership of the business and everything went perfectly well. So that's unfortunately the sad part of what it is that we do is, you know, you hope you never have to use it, but when you did, fortunately enough, everything went very, very well. The overwhelming response from all of my clients, and it's kind of how I sell the process in the first place, is they appreciate the whole of service that we, that we offer. And, and everybody who comes to me from another firm has said, my previous accountant didn't say anything about any of this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, what's going on? So the feedback's overwhelmingly positive. It's brilliant. It really is.
That's fine. So you can, one of the ones, we've got Tim Munro is coming on very shortly and Tim will shake everyone up. But one of the, the big ones has been, you know, the, the fact that you can run this as a one person with a couple of VAs, which is fantastic. But the, the power of the punch you can do as a one person with, you know, the knowledge and the documents is quite amazing.
Unquestionably, it's, I mean, given how simple Lightyear Docs is laid out and the simplicity of the questionnaires, it, it really is a no-brainer to be offering the products to the clients. And as I said, when we onboard clients now, they don't have a choice. We go through every product and sign them up for what they need. We use practice ignition for our onboarding and we lay out the product that we're going to service them with, what it is, what it does. And it's just a no-brainer now. And my VAs handle it all, you know, quite easily, well inside, you know, their, their eight hours a day they work for me, well inside the normal work that they do. So it doesn't take a lot of time out of their, their day to do this sort of stuff.
I've had a question from John Appoloni. How many business clients do you have?
So I have less than 50 groups. Some of those groups have got multiple moving pieces in there, but I have left them 50 groups of clients. My largest client has four different entities. Most of my clients are turning over about half a mil to three quarters of a mil. My biggest client is a five mil client. So I'm at the lower end of, you know, of, of clients. Most of my clients are just one and two man bands themselves. So I'm, I was able to produce that sort of income of that small number of clients.
That's fantastic. And with that one, no doubt, you're probably going to get a few referrals as well.
Well, I mean, the good thing about, it's, it's funny, actually. I get people reading me from, you know, referrals from clients who don't want me as an accountant, don't need their tax returns done because they're just P R Y G, but want a will. So, you know, I, I haven't, you know, taken into consideration or can for any of that sort of stuff. That's, that's peripheral.
Yeah.
You know, not really my core client business. The question there, can we explain how we go through the products? I mean, I'm assuming you've explained what all the services are. I just simply started leading man or the leading member because that's usually the one that all of my clients need. They're either in a trust or in a company with no succession plan. I start there. And then away I go. And, and my onboarding takes about three or four hours. So I'll spend a lot of time initially sitting down and talking with the client as to what it is that they want of me. And as we go through that conversation, I start picking out the lightyear products that's going to be applicable to them. You know, if, if it's a sole trader, it's a whole different conversation than if it's, you know, a husband and wife directors, shareholders with three investment properties. So depending on that conversation, depends on which of those products, I start saying this is what we need to do.
Fantastic. I might get you to stay on the line and I might get Mr. Tim to come in and I have a, have a go. But if you want to just look on the chat, if you've got any questions for Matt on the chat, just put them on. And we'll get Mr. Tim back on as well. But we'll really appreciate you coming on. And I know I was doing a little bit of work for you on the weekend. You know, we're throwing around a few strategies and ideas and that you, you know, said you come on and I know it's time taken out of your business, but you know, it's also really important for, for everyone to understand because, you know, a lot of people are new here. And as I said, I can give my knowledge, Tim's going to give his knowledge in a second. And then, you know, we all move on from there. And, you know, it's, it's a whole brand new ballgame. And no one's ever, you know, thought of this sort of area. It's funny. I was, I told everyone I was dealing with an accountant just recently. And basically they were saying that, you know, they were going to a discussion group. And all the accountants said, oh, we wouldn't set up trusts or even companies online. You always get lawyers to set it up. And you're thinking, well, first thing I've said, then well, obviously you're in the wrong discussion group. Why would you even be in one that, that is exactly like that? But let's get, Tim, are you around at all? Calling Mr. Tim Munro, is he there? If not, then I'll just have a chat until Tim comes back. But look, we've learned a lot, as I said, you know, from my perspective. If you know me and I know a lot of people do, I'm well and truly ahead of the trend. And another person who's ahead of the trend always is Mr. Tim Munro. So do you want to take it away, Tim?
Mr. Grant, how about you? It's good to see you. You're looking mighty fine as usual.
Yeah, thank you very much. A week up, the snow was good, but I can tell you, I prefer to be back up here in the, in the the warmer weather rather than minus nine degrees. It's not my, not my cup of tea.
Fair enough. Hey, look, it's great to be here. I know a lot of the people that are on this session, and there's a lot that I don't know, but it's nice to see you. Also, I'm Tim. I set up my first accounting business in 1990. So I was nineteen back then, straight out of university. So you can all work out how old I am now. G'day, Tony. And I started my business to count plus, that was a basket case, bought it back from Count Plus in 2016. And obviously we've got change GPS, we've got 650 accounting firms using our tax planning and soft, all sorts of software. I know a lot of here are using it. If you're not, I'd love to talk to you and maybe see if you're zero con or another time. So I can show you how you can use it in your practice. But one of the big things we're working on right now is estate planning software. And we're hoping to have this ready or early part in the new year, but it's going to blow everybody's minds. It's going to make it so easy to weaponize all of you with what you're doing with the pepper and Lightyear Docs to make it so easy to get out there and to offer your services and to get paid. So look, I'm going to start this by saying, any questions? And I'm serious about it because I can talk about all sorts of stuff, but put up your questions, bombard me, ask me anything you like. I'll answer everything. Okay? So you got any questions at all? Otherwise, I can run through and show you a few things we're doing at Change Accountants, how we monetise things and Grant can interview me.
Oh, exactly. Well, I think, I think from the first one is that I was telling everyone that I came from a tax and then SMSF background, but you know, I saw this as an opportunity. I went through the stats with everyone this morning. There's now 5.2 million baby boomers. And in front of that, I think there was, you know, round about two, two million, even the generation before that. So, and then unfortunately, they're the ones who are tied up with a lot of wealth. But look, we just had Ronald just saying that there's a lot of people who are dying at age forty-eight, fifty, you know, age forty, we don't know what it is. You know, is it a lag of the vaccines? Is it COVID or is it something? But you know, that, that, that age, it's going to get become an endemic. And, you know, we need to make sure that we're supporting our clients. And, you know, it's not necessarily they do want to go to lawyers, you know, they prefer to have accounts.
So look, one of the first things, John Appoloni, John, good to see you. You asked the question, how do we get over the challenge when your clients say you're an accountant, not a lawyer? How can you do this work? Well, I've been doing this for a long time before Grant set up Lightyear Docs. We were doing our own companies and trusts, using different firms and, and, you know, using Infinity. We use Clary Hall before them, we use someone else before them. The wills we weren't doing, but none of our clients would ever get wills done. And as you know, for all those that knew me when I was in account financial, we do our statements of advice. And every statement advice, if your planner says, oh, you've got to get your will updated and your power of attorney updated. And you know, how many clients in my entire time as an accountant did that? None. None of them did. Because they don't know lawyers who can help them with those things. The lawyers they know did the conveyance. They're the suburban lawyers that charge small amounts of money, do a will for 300 bucks and they'll do the mirror rules, you know? Dad's money goes to mum, mum's money goes to dad. No thought about asset protection. And it's just, it's, it's almost negligent. But what I hate is in our industry, we're indoctrinated at the fact that, oh, you can't do that. That could be legal advice. You could be sued. You might, you might be able to do that. And I'm all about helping mums and dads. I want to help people be better off. And I'm not trying to do anything which is breaking the law at all. I'm not going to do that because I want to sleep well at night. But if we're going to help our clients in the best way possible, we know more about their circumstances than anybody else. So we need to coordinate that. Now, if at the very least, all you do is say, you need to seek advice from Laura about this and you grab them and you charge them to coordinate like a project manager fee, grab them to, you know, get Tony or grandchildren, pay them to do that or any lawyer you want. If you do that at the very least, that's fantastic. At least you're going to get them somewhere. However, I believe you can do far more. And what I love is that with Lightyear Docs and also with the pepper, you now have the skills and the technology to be able to coordinate it and do the work and get paid properly for what you're doing in a way that ticks all the boxes with the law societies. So I'll show in a moment the document that we've put together in Change GPS that you haven't seen yet. Because this is going to be part of our estate planning app that we'll release, which is a new app. But
Like a world premiere, is it? Or a world?
You, you've seen, you've seen this one, Grant, but I'll, I'll, I'll talk through. There's actually one or two separate members who are trialling this on secret because, and there's a lot of updates I'm about to put through with all the recent things in New South Wales about estates and other things like that. It's a constantly living, evolving document. But the key thing is upfront, I tell my clients, I'm not a lawyer, but I work with the best estate planning lawyers in Australia. And, you know, it's, it, I reckon Grant, Tony, fantastic. I wouldn't work for anyone else. But I have done work with Matthew Burgess from View Legal. I've done work with Brett Davies, you know, across in WA. There's other lawyers around the place. So don't get hung up on the lawyer. You should get hung up on your own advice. You should understand and own the whole estate planning asset protection area. Now, obviously I believe by none the best of Grant and Tony, and this gives you the opportunity to monetise you. For example, I use Matthew Burgess from View Legal to do a, like the protector, a gift in the state, a gift loan back for a client probably about five years ago. And I think View Legal charged about seven and a half grand and I charged about a thousand dollars. And what we're seeing here is you can charge your clients 1500 bucks for the advice upfront. You can charge them the five grand. You can pay five, 600 bucks for dispersments to Michael Jeffries and his crew to be able to register everything for you at a firm to optimum. And you've made good money from it. It's worthwhile. So
And she knows kind of how the protector came about because I remember doing it years ago with Shane Ellis down the Gold Coast. And, you know, from that, that perspective, you came and said, oh, look, I'm doing this with what's name. And I had a look and we've already got all those documents. So I thought, well, this is easy to put together because I'd rather give everyone else the opportunity to monetise it rather than keep it in a closed coterie of people.
Yeah. So that's how your version of protector came up. So I said, I don't want to keep having my clients pay seven. And I did almost all the work and I've got not much for it compared to the lawyer. So a couple of things then, we have had and Grant and Tony are aware of this, one of the documents or one of the changed GPS members started advertising or responded to someone on Facebook in Western Australia that someone said, can you help me with wills and powers of attorney? She said, yeah, I'm a accountant, I can help this, blah, blah, blah. And a lawyer over there must have put her on, must have referred it to the WA Law Society. And so she got to please explain that. So she sent across to us and said, how do we deal with this? And so Grant, Tony, myself, we combined forces and helped. And basically, you write back and said, or she wrote back, we gave her what to write. She said, look, I'm not giving legal advice. I'm talking to my clients about the tax outcome and structural outcome of things. I'm engaging a firm of lawyers that the wills will be prepared through. I've not prepared wills. I don't have access to those, you know, precincts to change around. And, and that's it. And she won. And there's a very easy letter to get through. So don't let yourselves get spooked is the first thing. We so often think that we can't do things, but we actually can. And what Grant and Tony have showed you is you can. And I keep saying it, I love what Grant always does. If someone says you can't do that, fine, show us the legislation. Prove it to them. And no one ever can. Because it's old wives' tales, all this stuff.
Yeah, I always, yeah, you know, I always learnt, you know, right from a young age. And I tell all the, the team at Abermley is, I'll say, I can't do it. I said, well, you know, you don't say that to me. You show me what another strategy is that actually delivers the same result. That's perfectly legal. So you need to be flexible in that regard.
Hundred percent. So wherever upfront that we coordinate everything, we'll arrange it all. And we say, quite frankly, if we don't do that, you'll never get it done. And to me, the most important thing is the client does have an up-to-date will and power of attorney. And let's just turn this around. What is the worst case scenario? Okay, let's say you do it and there's a beneficiary that complains or something like that. I think that your clients would much rather you have them going along this process than not having anything at all. I don't, I don't think, you know, if, if you're giving, the, the only lawsuits I've seen where people are, you know, suing lawyers and people are the high level contested stuff, blended families. And that's the stuff that you get Grant, Tony involved with anyway. Anything I've got that's, that's a bit intricate, I get Grant and Tony involved. So they, they're your people there to help you with that. Even if you want to use the letters I'm about to show you to go out, charge the initial advice, gather the information and then you grant 20% pay them to do that. You're still making good money.
One of the, one of the issues is when you get a new client in or a referral and you start this whole process. You know, what do you, well, I went through exactly how I engage with clients. What do you, how do you engage? You know, what's the frame up for you? And, you know, how do you build that story for them?
Okay, I'm just going to open up one or two documents and then I'll share my screen. Give me one moment. Just give me a moment. The way I'll show you exactly what we do. Do you know what? I can't find this state planning one.
Maybe it's hidden away in the vault somewhere.
Yeah, no, I've got, I've got about five different spots here. Here we go. So we're making adjustments to these things all the time. Just opening it up. Sorry about this, everyone. Just give me one moment and I'll
It's okay. They're, they're used to seeing me fritter around and look for stuff.
Oh, look, I've got something. Okay, here we go. What I'm going to do is just share a screen and take you through the process. So what we've got is Nathan Smith, who used to be head of financial planning, is now a head of estate planning and lifestyle accounting. We set up a group called Lifestyle Accounts Network, which I'll talk to you about a little bit later. Grant, can you send the screen there?
Yeah, absolutely. Maybe just open it up a little bit or, no, that's, that's fine. I can see it.
Okay. So this is available for people who are using Change GPS. Just to show you in Change GPS what we have here, if I go across to here, that's Change GPS. We've got tax planning, we've got structure, FBT, we've got blueprint to do corporate structure diagrams, which is just fantastic. Be able to do, you know, super quick structured diagrams using Zero Practice Manager or other pieces of software. Which I'll just show you because we're about to do a big new release on this next week. We're doing a session on Monday.
I saw that was exciting.
Yeah. So you can actually pull in stuff from super funds and things like that. I don't know what we've got here. Anyway, you can automatically put things together. But if you go into resources here, just to show you what we have, because it's sometimes hard to get started. Under asset protection and estate planning, we've got cash vault loan protection, estate planning, successor direct protector. We've got emails to help your clients to understand, hey, this is really important stuff. And so estate planning, we've got the system there. We've got an offer email to the clients, data capture form, rejection offer, initial level advice, letters to enclose, documents for signing and everything. So if you want how to start doing this, now that you're empowered by the pepper, we've got all the systems in there. And that's part of Change GPS Core. So to show you the data capture form, you can put your own logos and everything on there. This takes on the content that Grant's put together and we put our change GPS splash onto it. Over the page there, there's Nathan and Laura and myself. Names, addresses. So we get all information. What we find is we put this on a screen. We email it out to a client, but we put it on the screen and we get the client. We just booked in half an hour video meeting and we talked through it with them. And we've added a few things at the end of this, assets and liabilities. So this helps us to understand, pardon me, what they have and who has it and what we can do from an intergenerational wealth transfer point of view. Income and expenses. And we've also put in here for health conditions. So we can put the advanced health directives together. Now, once that's done, we'll have an initial look at that. And we tell people, we will charge you $1,500 for our initial advice about asset protection and estate planning. Now, we've got a basic estate planning letter in Change GPS, but this is what the final report will look like from the app. And what it does is it, it's just, it blends together personal asset protection, estate planning, a big thing for the accountants out there. This is what I've worked out during COVID when I spent a lot of time with Grant, looking at, hey, you know, single directed companies, what happens if they go down? And then Grant developed successor direct and everything else. Unless we have estate planning built in to our asset protection, that asset protection won't stand and vice versa. We can have the best companies and trusts set up and separate assets and risks and all that sort of thing. But unless we have that line of succession, we've learnt about the leading member during the course. Unless you've got that built-in line of succession, it all falls down. You need to have asset protection, estate planning done both at the same time. So here, this report covers estate planning and personal asset protection, not business. The personalized protection is what's in your own name. Family home, investment properties, shares in trading or bucket companies. You shouldn't have shares in a bucket company. A lot of clients end up doing that before they become a client. So if they've got any sort of ownership at all or equity in things, that's what needs to be dealt with. So over the page, the app will, it goes to 42 pages at the moment. And we're updating this. I've got some more updates about to put through. But it will generate this. And you can see here, introduction to estate planning. It takes you on the straight line, like our old mate, Jordan Belford.
Yeah.
Helping clients understand things. What is estate planning? The role of accountants and lawyers. Then we go through their current situation. Then we look at the wealth transfer plan. And Grant and Tony have been talking about not leaving anything in the estate. And that's why we really shouldn't call estate planning. If there's nothing in this state, we should call a wealth transfer plan, the wealth in our bucket companies or family protection trusts. How do we transfer that? So that's what this document will show. We go through the problem with traditional estate planning. It's always good to raise the problem because the problem is where the client is right now. Then we go through the leading member approach. And we've broken down everything that Grant and Tony have been talking about. We've put in the document here for you. You don't have to recreate the wheel. You've got it. We go through then, depending what they need, the software will pick these things up. An update to a will, power of attorney, advanced health directive, SMSF will, family allowance agreement, dependency declaration, hatties to protector, successor director, protecting business working capital and company shareholding, unit trusts, buck companies, and then final recommendations. This has the lot. So in the introduction to estate planning, so here straight away, the role of accountants and lawyers. A lawyer is responsible for preparing the legal documents. However, your lawyer needs to know what information to put in the documents. And as you would have seen, by the way, when we give these reports, I open them up, I meet with the client, have a video meeting. And like Grant does, you just read through it line by line, read through the reports. Because clients don't read these days. They assume, they look at things, they make up their own. So you read through it with them. Okay? And that's why this has been put in the simplest format you could ever see possible. It's just great. Your lawyer needs to work out what information to put in. If you don't have a close relationship with the lawyer, then this process may take a long time and you might find it difficult to explain complex and delicate family situations to someone who you've just met for the first time. Estate planning is a specialised area of law to get the best outcome for family and the specialist estate planning lawyer working with you. As your accountant, we have an excellent understanding of your business and investment structures, your tax situation, your background, family situation. Using this information, we can coordinate the preparation of your estate planning documents in liaison with specialist estate planning lawyers in a way that makes it much easier for you and saves you time. How was that?
It's fantastic. Can I ask you a couple of questions? First off, we've got, I'll, I'll ask you one question, but there's two parts. We've got quite a few financial planners who are actually on this. And I believe this is, you know, I've seen a lot of financial planners living in the industry. I mean, this is, this is something that's really in their wheelhouse. Do you want to talk about, obviously with the change GPS, the focus on accountants and yourself, but not necessarily the whole tax package for change GPS, but you're going to roll this out for planners. And the second one is, I know Nathan's made the transition. How's he finding it?
Okay. Well, two parts of that. It's funny. I'm just talking Nathan, we're putting in our company up for one of the zero awards, change accounts and advice and because of our focus on estate planning. our company up for one of the Zero Awards, um change accounts and advice and because of our focus on estate planning. Um, because nine O's is really doing that in a massive way. I know there's a lot of spending members starting to. And I'll go through some of the wins that Nathan's had. If you're a financial planner, well, for, for accountants and planners, will we make an estate planning app available? Um, be for five hundred dollars a month for probably up to a hundred clients. And then if you have more than a hundred clients, then it'll be, you know, it'll just ratchet up. Planners, we're making available financial planners as well. Instead of accountants, we'll say wealth advisor planners, we'll be able to change it. So under settings, you've got to change your planners or accountants. And it will put together, it'll have a database that you can put in of your clients' assets, liabilities, risk profiles, whether the leading member, whatever else. And the A I will filter everything and come up with um an urgent issues list for discussion. And then it will generate this document. And so you'd be able to print off at any stage clients' asset liability positions for the bank. You'd be able to monitor how their lifestyle investment assets flow and change over time. So just a, it's like a mini family office board strokes approach, which is gonna be fantastic. So this will be available for planners and for accountants, hopefully in the early part of the new year. Um, it will integrate with X P M Mitch and it will integrate with Lightyear Docs. So once we've got the initial recommendations ready with this, what we'll do is we'll, because we'll have, if you're using X P M, it'll be matching your client groups and X P M. You're about to push through, or if not, you're about to push data through into Lightyear Docs to pre-populate as much of this as possible. Okay, so that's one of the next things that that we'll be working on now that from tomorrow, hopefully Lightyear Docs will have its X P M integrations up and running.
So you're gonna uh be showing it at Zero Con or be talking about it at Zero Con?
No, not yet. We've got other things to show at Zero Con. So this is a sneak preview for, for everyone. So current situation we go through, yeah, so don't tell anyone about this everyone, this is wholly confidential, but this is what you'll be able to get early next year. Um, we go through a wealth transfer plan. Who's the key individuals, primary, secondary and tertiary beneficiaries? This is one of the biggest things um that we found that people don't discuss. Who are the tertiary beneficiaries? Like if my wife Lindal dies and if my daughter Savannah dies, Lindal's a primary beneficiary, Savannah's a secondary. Who's the tertiary beneficiaries? How many? Do you talk about these things with your clients? This needs to be looked at. You can't just have, it all goes to your partner and all goes to your kids. If you're all on a plane crash, half goes to my mum and half goes to Lindal's mum and dad. Okay, so that's, but I have a sister who I hate. And she's not done the right thing by my mum or my family. I specifically excluding her. Mum can get money, but nothing goes to my sister. And if anything goes to my sister, mum loses it. Okay? And so that's what Grant's working with me on. That, Grant, our meeting on Friday is gonna be very exciting to do.
Actually, yeah, if you wanna, sorry, you might just wanna give it a bit of a um background on what we are. So Sepeta is not just about an organisation that's taking your money, not as a huge amount, but we're doing a lot of things that are quite revolutionary and, and this was, you know, one of your um brainiac ideas that we've sort of taken up. So maybe just have like a five minute um little uh discussion on a family advisory boards.
Yeah, look, I know we're working through this document, let's do that. In my situation and Grant, you were talking about your situation because you've got quite a unique blended family situation as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so if anything happens to Lindal, or if anything happens to me, my wife Lindal, she's great, she'll go in as a successor. But that's, that's why we need to protect on our property, but she's the asset holding person. But if you've got a spouse who's not a director, and if the key person dies and they go in as a director, then they put their assets at risk. So you've got to get protectors on the asset holding spouses as well. Okay? Second thing, if I die, Lindal's gonna need help. So I said to Grant, okay, Grant, can you please be on an advisory board for Lindal? I'm gonna get David Boyer, who's our C E O of Change GPS, um I'll have probably one other person and then Grant. And that they can collectively guide Lindal in making decisions on things because she hasn't got the experience. Of clients, but we need things to continue. Like if I die, the change account and advise needs to go on forever because we've got a great following, we've got great clients, we've got a great team. Like Susan Banks has worked for me there for twenty eight years. I mean, that's insane. So um, you know, this needs to continue. We're all building things up that shouldn't end if we're not here. So if Lindal and I die, who's gonna advise Savannah? She's twelve. So I want, that's where I'm talking to Grant, we came up with the idea that what we want to be able to do is we want to be able to put in to place um a governing board that can guide Savannah and maybe make all the decisions early on. But as Savannah gets older, she can start making more and more, at age twenty five, she can start making a lot of decisions herself. And so she needs that guidance, that handholding. So again, Grant and one or two others will be on there doing it. And then Grant said, well, I need the same for me. And we both dawned on us, there's so many accountants and advisors out there that we know, but it's a lonely place. Have you got anyone that can guide your wife or your partner or your kids? And we thought, well, because there's so many people have been asking Grant and I and Tony and others to help them and do, and told us they want us to help in similar ways, we thought, well, let's set up a group um of, of highly experienced um council and advisors who've been through Sepeta that now we'll start it small. But to be able to offer these services, almost like a family office arrangement where we can be, people can select who they like and we could then be in a, in a governing, in a, in a kind of like a guidance role. And this would be in a schedule to a light years doc will or to a, a trust, other things like that. They can provide guidance to secondary, primary, secondary, tertiary beneficiaries. And you can say, look, you can provide guidance and no decision making, or you can have decision making, or you can have splits on decision making, or you can have decision making changing over time, you can incorporate payments, how it all works, all that sort of thing. So at least I wanna know that if anything happens to me, Lindal and Savannah are gonna be cared for. And I know the people that are gonna be guiding them. I know how they're gonna get paid and I know how much influence they have. Put in the chat, what do you think about that? Is that something you're interested in?
Oh, absolutely. Um, eh, look, um, we're having a half day workshop on it, um, so it's gonna be pretty exciting.
So that's what we're talking about. Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fascinating what we come up with, but looking forward to talking about that further. Okay, so that's the wealth transfer plan. Over the page here, the app will then put together a very brief overview of the key assets and liabilities. There's the value, there's the debt and there's the net amount. And the estate strategy here, is it a protector? Is it a will and testamentary trust? Is it leading member control of a trust? Is it an S M S F will? See, so those strategies, they're the things that we're going to be advising on. So a client can see, no matter who owns what within that family group, what it is they have, but then what estate strategy do you use to protect that? Do you like that around? Like I, I, I think that's just a very simple way of, of explaining things to your clients. Now, you can type that up every time. Wouldn't it be great to have that in an app? And you can adjust the values at any stage because it's not just giving this advice once a year. And we charge fifteen hundred plus G S T just for this advice document. But then you can charge a grand or fifteen hundred every year to review it, update it. Clients have always got new companies, trusts, properties, updated insurance, they've split, whatever. Actually, we'll probably put with this as well, um, because you know, you're probably getting a large number of your clients in, in, you know, separations and divorces unfortunately every year. We've noticed that in our client base during post-COVID as well. It seems like everyone's at each other, which is a real shame. Um, if you've got this information, we can then have a, a family law separation. So you can put who gets what and how it all flows out from there as well. That might be of big help to everyone. Anyway, we then go through the problem with the traditional estate planning. It's important for you to guide your clients and help them to understand this. So that's, you're not going to your clients and you're saying, oh, we're gonna charge you money, update your wills. Let's highlight the problem. And you can show them one or two screens on this, you know, in a PowerPoint slide without giving them the advice. Give them a taste and then you're gonna charge them. Problem is, everything goes into the pot. And then what happens? There's the nasty judge, the devil. They can go in, anyone can have a crack. That person there could be anyone that has a, a crack under the Family Provisions Act and it's no good, you see? The judge will award anything that's in this state and the beneficiaries wanna get it. The leading member approach, everything goes in a family protection trust and S M S F death benefits trust. Instead of a big fat estate, what do we have now? A tiny estate with next to nothing in it. But the key beneficiaries are in control of those assets. When you show clients that, they get it. So it's all about using this visual approach and we're gonna be doing this more and more with everything in Change GPS. As you can see, it's a beautiful looking document. Um, it's better than anything I've ever seen from anyone else and you'll have access to this. We go through and explain the leading member concept, who they should be, the four key leading member structures. So I'll just sit through that. We go through your will, executive ship, during power of attorney, advanced healthcare directive, S M S F will, lump sum payments and stripper. Why you then need, instead of paying seven and thirty two percent, why you need a family allowance agreement or dependency declaration to try to get you into this dependency role and not having to pay tax on lump sums. We then go through family, home, investment property protection and the use of the protector. Now, Grant would have gone through this, but again, we've gone through the six key steps um with using the protector, with all the diagrams, all the documents needed and explain things to your clients. We then go through and talk about um that very famous recent case, the Bosonet case that Grant would have spoken to you about. Successor director, business working capital protection, P P S R loan, security um from um if you wanna protect any loans to uh your trading companies or bucket companies. Just updating company shareholding and unit trust protection, bucket company tax strategies and then all the recommendations. So once it's all done, comes up with an action plan and we put here estimated tax deductible amounts. Again, don't get hung up on that. We will all disagree about what we think should be tax deductible with clients. I'm happy for these amounts there. You make your own choice. Um, but clients love seeing that. Recommendations for companies, trusts, S M S Fs, draft document qualification for this and that's it. So that's, once we get this out, we find that every single client goes with everything we recommend. And Nathan's doing one for a client at the moment that's got six or seven properties, so thirty five grand plus worth of protectors in there. Every one of these is probably five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty seven, thirty grand worth of work. Clients love it. And if they don't have the funds to pay for it, we sum them up through a quick fee. Quick fee pays us upfront, client pays it off over twelve months. It is just beautiful. Okay, I'm gonna have a sip of my coffee. Any questions, anybody?
I think there's a, there's a few on the, I'll ask you from the Q and A and we can go through because again, this is an opportunity everyone to um, uh, to go through. Someone asked just, I think tongue in cheek, of course, but how did you set up your first accounting firm at nineteen?
James, that was um, yeah, I was going through uni and I was working for a lawyer and I computerized. That's in the days where my first job was six dollars an hour, sitting in his boardroom, uh nineteen eighty eight. And he was three years behind his trust account. And I got in there, mum made me go and get a job and I was going to uni and I couldn't work it out. I, I think I almost cried. They gave me a cup of coffee. Had all the, all the trust cards, all the bits and pieces in there. I had to work things out. Took me now to work out debits and credits are different in a trust as opposed to non-trust. Then I started handwriting, put the trust up to date, balance it all. Then I start on the general ledger, that's three years behind. So you mentioned handwriting, we had sales journals, we had general ledger cards for debtors, all that sort of stuff. Within six months, I said, hey, listen, you know, he was highly profitable guy, I said, I read in the back of one of his lawyer journals, there's this software called New Focus in the days of DOS. I said, we've gotta spend some money and computerize. So in the second six months, I computerized, set up his whole, we spent thirty grand on computers, about forty grand on this new Focus software, had all the training, set it up. You would know these stories, Grant, and um fully computerized. Then this guy left and went to the bar to become a barrister. So nineteen ninety, I thought this was great. I was, you know, had to go and do something. So with a friend at uni, we set things up. He was already working at another firm of accountants. He's looking at all of me, so the firm got its tax agent's licence, we put out an A frame, tax returns forty dollars in Adelaide Street in city. That's how we kicked off. And we realised, sorry, Tony.
No, mate, I'm just saying, right? This document here that you've just presented to the participants, right?
Hmm.
It's extraordinary. I've never seen a document like this in my life. This is fair income, right? I've never, I've never seen. Now, coming back to what we were saying with Grant earlier on, when I was presenting on the administration of estates, right? This is a classic example of how you create value in a client and you'll get paid for it.
Hmm.
Do you follow? That's creation of value. That's what it is. So this is for the participants. If you start using something like this, I, I, I won't guarantee, but ninety nine point nine, 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 nine percent, you'll blow your client's mind out basically. And they'll, and they'll stick with that basically and what, and whatever you charge, they'll pay you because you created that value for them. They look at it visually.
Yeah.
Hmm. That's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Tony. And you, that's, that's just that repetition for emphasis for us all. Look, you put this in front of a client, the client just, they can't believe it. They've never seen anything like it. Um, you know, you're not gonna use all that. Your document probably go to twenty pages. I've just got everything there. As I start at the end in mind and then we're gonna, the software compresses it, add some more things in that I'm working on at the moment. And it makes it so simple. So this amount comes out, you show this to the client, the client basically says, where do I sign? You know, we get them sign off on a proposal, we're getting the part upfront and then we work on it.
But not only that, it, it sets the scene at the end of the day from the start because you've got that as a set of instructions for the documents at the end of the day. And you can keep them on file. If they don't accept it, then sign off on, on one of those. You know, what, what other, again, you created an indemnity basically.
Yeah.
You, you know?
Tim, can I jump in there, Tim?
Sure.
I, I use your products. Um, overwhelmingly, it's the, it's the value add and it's this, and it's the high perceived value of what it is that you're providing your client that makes the price kind of irrelevant. And, and to be fair, those prizes, the, the, the prices you got there are well on the low side, to be fair. Um, but it's all in, it's, yeah, but, but it's all in how it's presented. And I'm gonna use the word soul to the client, but the word sell is, is the wrong word. It, it, it's all in that, um, you know, that big macro uh family picture that you, that you pitch to the client, that they look at this and they can't help but say, of course I want all of that. What a silly question. I definitely need that. And the price becomes completely irrelevant. And it's how I've able to extract so much money per client is because it's a massive, massive sense of value in, in this product.
Well, I think it's important also that when we have a look at the, the context and probably where you started, um, Matt, and I know um uh, Tim and I are the same thing is that it's a, it's not holistic because I don't like the word holistic. It's a all of a one approach for a thing to protect family wealth for bloodline. And if you come with that, it's a big tent, but you, when you start actually showing the tent, they can look and say, well, my accountant doesn't do this, my lawyer doesn't, my planner doesn't do this because they're all siloed, whereas we've got one big tent. Um, and that's what the opportunity is there.
Yeah, and, and, and it's the whole of that, that you offer, you know, that I offer the clients. There's nothing that's not included. Um, and, and again, it comes back to that massive big value or the big huge perceived value because you're right. No one else offers everything in one fast sweep. Um, and because you're able to do that, I, I'd like to call it an apples and an oranges comparison. None of my clients can go and shop me off anywhere else because there's nobody to shop me against. I'm an orange and they're trying to go find apples.
Hmm.
Um, and you know, I, I, the only reason I lose clients is because I fire them, not because they leave me because they, they can't go anywhere else to get everything that, you know, is inside all of this. And obviously the change GPS, you've only touched on a few of the products you've got there, Tim. There's a whole plethora of, of product there.
Hmm.
Um, that, that we use for our clients and they can't help but stay, hang around and give us money.
Hundred percent. Look, it's a it, it's just one of these things that if you haven't done it, someone made the comment, if you're not offering this, someone else will to your clients. And this is a big area, like the intergenerational wealth transfer, it is just starting to like it's, it's gone through a generation, they're about to go to the second, it's really about to start our first. So this is a land grab over the next period of time. And from, I don't know if you've covered this off, Grant, but what everyone's seen in this area, looking at the United States, is that when a client dies and their kids take the money over, in seventy eight percent of the times, the kids transfer to another advisor. And so if you think that you're gonna be building up a larger practice and doesn't matter, you know, you can look after the family, you're wrong. It's gonna move on. But if you get, if you build these things in and have the kids It's gonna move on. But if you get, if you build these things in and have the kids involved and have them understanding what happens and. They're not gonna go. So this is locking in your future business potential at the same time. So. All about, um it's all about getting out there and putting aside some time to start doing this. So look, I've got Nathan, I'm paying Nathan full time. All he's doing is doing this. I think.
I think that's a, actually might just pick you up on that, because obviously. Um a lot of your stuff is based on practice management and improving your ROI on time. You know, uh I, I, I see this a lot, because everyone, most accountants can see it. And, and the good thing about accounting firms. Unlike law firms or planners, they don't need to go and prospect because the clients are in front of them. Um but the question is, what do you advise them in terms of ma-, you know, maximizing your time here? Um versus compliance, what are some of the tools you've put in place to um bring it through as best as possible?
Okay, I know there's a few questions. We'll come back to those in a moment. Um so don't think we're forgetting that. What we're doing is in our accounting business, there, there's, there's two key things we're focusing on. One is lifestyle accounting and w- we are setting up a group called Lifestyle Accounts Network. There, there's about fifty. Accounting firms that are part of that. And you know, Grant's gonna be part of this moving forward. It's, it's, it's just a collective of accountants. That want to jump out of doing tax work and move into doing estate planning. Bigger picture in a lifestyle accounting, where are you going, how can help succession, how long's your money gonna last? Helping clients with life event decisions and a framework to charge for those. That's a separate thing altogether. We're gonna launch that properly in October, November this year. Love everyone to be part of that. It's just a perfect fit with a pepper and everything plugs in. The other side of it is the estate planning personal asset protection. Every time we get a new client, Nathan talks to those new clients first. It's like a medium for our accounting business. Scopes what's needed, looks at, and, and the first thing is to give them this advice document. Is that why we've got their assets liabilities, we've got their wills, we've got their trust documents, we've got their. Everything else. And we've got the wish list from the clients, from the things that accountants don't do. Nathan then works with our head of accounting, when they have a joint meeting. And then they all work as if they're, Nathan's work starts. And then, once he's done this. The client gets handed across to our internal wealth advice area, and they help them with insurance and super and other things. And by the way. If you want to have your clients helped in those areas, uh we'll have a solution for accountants if you're not licensed. In a month or two. I've got some substitute on Friday, Grant, which is quite interesting.
Oh, fantastic.
A straight line approach. So again, we want accountants to own the front end conversations with their clients about. You know, where are you going in your life, how is your money gonna last? Helping them with life decisions and, and charging for those conversations you're already having. And then up to the point of when you have to give financial advice, then you either refer them to the planner or you do it in-house. Or there might be an option that we've got open for you that we're in the middle of sorting out right now. So we've talked to every single one of our clients upfront. Nathan does that. He's got truckloads of work doing this. He's just too busy. Um and then we're gradually working through our client database. So, you know, I, I was just out, saw a new client today, we're taking over. On that, it's probably gonna be eighty or ninety in accounting fees. And straight away, it's probably about twenty five, thirty, thirty five worth of. Structuring, estate planning, asset protection work we're gonna do in the first month or two. And it's just fantastic. We spoke about some of these things. Blended family, he knows how many hours between now and December next year. Paying off his ex, you know, um it's about, uh you know, it's, he's paying them about seven grand a month. Catch, some of it's, it's about fifteen grand a month, you know, he's paying tax on to give the ex this. Can't wait, stop that. Wants to make certain it doesn't get this. So it's such an important thing, clients um that we're finding. This is more important than almost anything else. And what we say to clients about it, we say, look, accountants. We say this to accountants when we talk from Change GPS. Accounts are so hung up on making certain your clients are not paying forty seven percent tax. But my challenge to you is unless you talk to your clients about this and they lose assets, because they go in the wrong way. Not staying in the same bloodline and everything else. You're not gonna lose forty seven percent of income. They're gonna lose a hundred percent of their asset value.
Exactly.
Not forty seven percent income, but if you get it wrong, a hundred percent of asset total value. That's my job.
Yeah, I like, I like that. I'm gonna keep that. You should, you should um.
You can quote me on that, Grant.
Yeah, trademark it, buddy.
And that is, if you use that line with the client, I'll go, yeah, I get it. So. While accountants ain't selling, you know, it's, I, I love selling, I, but it's educating, it's helping someone to understand. It's so, if you help them to understand what this means for them, price is irrelevant. We had Matt on here before and we've had others. It's not about the price. It's just like, you know, if you've got a client that's got a couple, a million dollars worth of equity in a property. You know, if they're concerned about losing it, you know, you could charge five, you could charge ten for the protector. They don't care. If they understand that that's at risk and they wanna protect it, get out there and advise them and help them to do it. And then we view it once a year. It's not just the ones off, because the app that will have, it'll have initial advice, but it's also gonna have renew advice. So once a year, you're gonna go through and review it all. And you'll probably find you've got stuff that drops in every time. So. Here is an ongoing trail, so to speak, of all these advice things that you're gonna be doing, which is just insane. Cameron, Alan, would I look at releasing the document before the app? Sorry. I can't do that. You're gonna have to wait for the app. Uh you, there's a lot to, look, we're updating the document all the time and. Really, it's just something that I wanna have everyone up and ready and just bang, you can start using. If we get the app done sooner, we'll release it sooner. I'd love to release it earlier, but yeah, I've, I've. Just gotta keep working on it and um just put the full focus on the app. I know you'd love it. I'm sorry.
James has got a good one, and I, I think it's important because. You're a long way further down the track, but I know that, you know, when you're just starting in here, it can get a bit daunting, but. Uh when does something get too intricate for you, Tim? I have a big blended family referral for living trust where we're twenty million plus wealth and wondering. When to bring in the big guns like Grant and Tony.
If you at ever, any stage at all wonder about, should you bring in the big guns, you should have brought in the big guns. Some of the words, if, if at any stage at all, where you, you, you just need that. Guidance, that, that brain's standing behind you, talk to Grant and Tony sooner or later, okay? I'd grant, I'd do that all the time, don't I?
Yeah, no, all the time. Yeah, oh, Grant, just like, Grant, can you just tell me, I've got this one small thing, and it's like, oh God, oh yeah, the guy's got a hundred million dollars. He's a blended family, hates his kids. So, yeah, but that's, that's the exciting part about it.
I'm currently helping start of the process doing estate planning for clients worth about six hundred and twenty mil. And I'm super confident. I've actually given him this advice report. Okay, I've given him this advice report, gone through everything, and he's just running through a few scenarios and things at the moment, then we're gonna meet and go through. Now, as soon as he's saying, yep, let's proceed, that's when I'm giving Grant Tony the taps. All right, I start working on this jointly. Now, so it's one of these things that. For smaller things, for even twenty, thirty mil, uh no dramas, but I always bring Grant and Tony in the loop. Just so they're aware of it. And I actually get, you know, for, for high value things, I get Grant and Tony to be there and make certain. Grant knows, he's had one of my clients, he's met with Grant a couple of times for sign offs. Grant videos him signing the documents. I love that. So, get the big guy involved.
Yeah, one, one of the other ones is, because we talked about the success director, and I, I think personally, because we've had quite a few. Um advisors whose clients have died. Um and uh Matt was talking about. How although the client died, it was just a seamless um transition, whereas. Um the other accounts advisors who asked the pepper, they just hadn't got around to doing successor director. So what do you say to your clients around it? And what if they say, look, you know, not interested?
Well, in change GPS, if someone doesn't want something. What we've drafted for you is, for example, successor director. Actually, I haven't got one on there, but um. For example, if we go through like estate planning, if they don't want something, client email rejection or will an EPA offer. I actually email the client, say, I confirm that you've rejected this, please email back and, you know, confirm it. That way, if you recommend something to someone and they don't want it. What's gonna happen is the crap will hit the fan if they die. And if there's a smart act lawyer in the ear of the spouse, saying, oh, the accountant should have done that. You might have spoken to the client, the client didn't want it, but there's no proof. If you document that by way of an email and get the client to sign off, if they don't wanna sign off on it. At least there's the record of the email on, that's your phone that's gone out. It's, it's, you know, that, that's evidence that cannot be disproved. That you spoke to the client and they didn't want it. Now, that's their tough luck. If they, if they don't want, if they don't, it's part of the funds, if they don't want it. I'd be kind of thinking, are they a long-term client for your firm? Because you should be working on a smaller number of clients and doing more for them. And not working with people that don't wanna spend, you know, successor direct, that's four, five hundred bucks, that's not a lot. If they don't wanna spend that per company to sort out their stuff, do you really want them as a client? I wouldn't.
No, that's crazy.
John's asked a question about multiples. Great question, John. So. These days, financial planning, like financial planning is of multiples, you know, three or four times occurring, accounts like one times occurings. Um now it's all different. Now, financial planning is an absolute basic case and all the various, but it's gonna swing back because the government's gone way too far. Interesting to see where it goes. If you've got, you know, you've got, you know, half a million, a mil, two, five, ten with accounting fees. And you start doing this, everyone in business, if you've got a hundred business client groups, and if you charge fifteen hundred each. What's that, a hundred and fifty grand worth of, you know, work straight away? And then there's gonna be five, ten, fifteen, twenty dropout. You can only probably do two or three of those a month. So all of a sudden, there might be. An extra ten, twenty, thirty, forty a month coming through. We're looking at easily half a million bucks a year. And then you're gonna do reviews on that and then moving forward. So number one, you've bumped up the sale price for your practice significantly. Number two, if the work is stickier work and it's, it's locked in and proven. I would be saying, if I'm trying to sell my business, well, I want one point five times recurring. Because it's a lot more certain than a whole of small tax term work that could flutter anywhere else. So that's up to, again, I think that if you've got a business that builds these sort of things in. Um you're, you're much more valuable to someone that wants to buy, much more valuable. What are your thoughts on that, John?
Another one also, Tim, while you're there, how um. Uh when you're doing work for clients, do you also pick up their children's work in some cases?
Hundred percent. Because what I do is I've got the clients involved. Okay, and this is the, this is the key, um getting them involved. With this initial estate planning advice letter. So right at the very beginning, see the wealth transfer plan? There's John Smith, there's Susie, Susie Wong, his wife, primary beneficiaries, they would be each other. Via testamentary trust, because you don't want money going to, but secondary be their kids and so on. So, so like. We talk about this, how old are the kids? And if the kids are old enough, you get the kids involved. Because the kids need to be aware, uh is one of the kids gonna be a successor leading member? See, a spouse might be, but if the spouse goes, is they, are they, do they know it's involved? Do the kids know what there is there? So we do get the kids involved, we also get the parents involved. You see, what if a parent dies? And there's this individual here who's a director, sole director of a trading company, which is at risk, and you've done all the good stuff to get um. No money going to them, and all of a sudden, a parent dies and leaves them two million bucks. Your asset protection just gone to pieces. Now, what are you gonna do in those circumstances? So you need to look up, you need to look down. You get everybody involved. Now, I'm hope I say this to a nitin. Does the client take offence when they get a rejection letter to sign? Um generally not. Now, again, it's how you put it through. Now, if you're giving advice and then you fill up and the client doesn't want it, I say, hey, listen, John. That's great. No pressure from me. We're here to tell you, give you all the ideas what you can do. But if you don't want that, we're just gonna confirm that in an email. And I like this email back, say, yep, you know, I confirmed I didn't want it, just for our records. It's just really important that we've got that on hand, because I don't know why anyone in your family, after saying, oh, you should have done that, and I've already recommended that. And I've not had any pushback. Now, sometimes the clients don't wanna email back, because you know what? Clients don't like taking personal responsibility. And if they don't wanna do it, and if it's the cost, and that's the cost. I've got in the back of my mind, red flag, this client is probably not a long-term key client for my firm. And so you start to look at, and then you start to find the kind of, you know, I wanna push prices down. I mean, no, our price is going up minimum ten percent every year, and they're gonna go up more and more as time goes on, because we're in demand. Why should I work extra when there's so much demand out there? You know, so fire, fire the crappy clients, fire the clients that don't wanna pay. And there's so much work. If you just started working with your top five, ten, fifteen, twenty clients, you know what you're gonna do? You're gonna do this work for them, get rid of all that stuff. And then they're all gonna have three family members or friends that they're gonna refer to. And Nathan's had it minimum of three, for every client has done this. They talk about it at barbecues. And they'll say, my accountant hasn't done this. And they start then getting these referrals. Nathan's got all this referral work that our accounting firm can't handle at the moment. It's insane. So putting on yet more accountants. So, yeah, there's just lots of good stuff there. Clients. I've had one get a bit funny and I knew straight away, I want them to go. Apart from that, they don't take offence, that they understand. I've only had very few clients rejected, okay? Very, very few. But we've given you tools there to look after that. Um if you do estate painting through Change GPS, do you still need to keep supplying just strategy with like your docs, Nitin? Of course you do, they're complimentary. We don't give you the documents. What Change GPS give you are the systems and the selling tools. And the advice documents. Now, once you've given that and you've monetized it and you've charged that work to the client for the advice, you've then got to deliver those documents. That's where a lot of your docs come in. So we're the front end, we weaponize you to explain and to be able to charge your clients. And then Grant, with like your docs, generate all those documents and that's your delivery. That's how it works together. You need both. John, we can outsource the access to you. Are you gonna be zero account? Who's gonna be a zero account, everyone? We're gonna stand there. Love to see everyone. We've got a big stand in the middle, because we're zero a part of the year, so we thought we'd. We'd splash out this year. Hope to see you all there. Um we might talk to you, John. Okay, uh Ron, some people missing the point, wealth transfer plan or high value revenue for super in-house. Yeah, the wealth transfer plan, Ron, your question in there is, is epic. Um that is significant. In fact, I'll show you, I mean, the sort of things, again, I'm just showing some things that we're, I'm working on personally here. You're seeing some of the, the skunk work, some of the, the stuff in, in the backend here that I'm working on. Uh let me just have a look. I'll just open up and show you some things.
And just while I'm doing that one, uh Ron, Ron's uh come back and said that they. Uh the social security assembly dude look a gifting going back five years. I just jumped on their website, but. Thanks for that, Ron. Uh but, you know, long-term plans, absolutely.
Now, I've seen social security, by the way, if you write off loans from trusts and close them down. Not or, or, or cancel them. I've seen them not treated as gifts. That's really interesting. I need to look at it a little bit further. But I, I've seen it in a number of places. Um so I'm just trying to find. Where I have put one of these documents I've been working on.
Um it's a good one from John too. Um when you're talking about doing all these wills and um. The estate plan and all of this sort of stuff, and John's talking about it being transactional. Unfortunately, John, it's not the case, because. You might have done up the most brilliant stuff, and then the client comes in and says, well, um I'm gonna get divorced. And as soon as you do that, all your structuring that you've done, you've got to go and amend it really quickly. And the beautiful thing about it is families change all the time, so that every week, when you go through a review. It's definitely worthwhile raising with, well, you wanted this, you wanted this, you wanted this. Is there anyone in your family who you don't believe is up to scratch or, or uh changing? And, and at this point in time, you know, we're looking at, uh for example, I, I showed you what a um, a living trust. Or not a living trust, a um, a life interest in a, a will is. The problem is a life interest in a will is still gonna be subject to a family provisions claim. So what we're using these days is. Um and I've been doing this with Tim, is to do a long-term lease um for, you know, after forty nine years. Or the life of, for example, your parents or whoever wants or the spouse or the second spouse, because. That one sits well and truly outside of the estate. So we're always thinking about new strategies.
Again, that's an example of the wealth transfer plan. So you, the app that we're creating will will. Put one of those out as a starting point before you give the advice. And then what you do is you talk this through with your client, say, is this right? And straight away, see, when you factor in things like life cover, million bucks. Your clients are richer than they think they are. By the time you factor all of these things in, all of a sudden, I'm talking about. Now, seven mil worth of, or it could be nine mil worth of value. You know, because you've got two million there sucked out in the protector. So that's actually seven point four mil. The strategy and the wealth transfer plan, who gets the first, who gets second, who gets tertiary in the notes. Now, by the time you get a client to say, yep, I understand it, this is where I want the money to go. So you can separate who gets what money, then you go and document your advice. So that's just a very simple way. That's what the app will do. That's the sort of style of report it's going to give to you. And then we'll be able to put date stamps on every one of those. And so we can say, well, here's an asset liability position this year, last year, the year before. So as you go, you went into review, you put in the date of review. You know, the value, or you might just make a thirtieth of June, that we can give some nice reports over time. Your lifestyle, net wealth, your investment, net wealth, and how everything else goes. So, yeah, we're just trying to make it super easy for you. Again, no one's put the stuff together, but see. He, there's your strategy for each one of those key assets. And you can pivot table them depending what entity you're in. You can do it entity by entity, asset by asset. As you can see, it's a big lot of work. Um, we've just put on a six member dev team. Um, they'll be working the Philippines, so they're starting to scope all this out right now. We're investing a lot of money to do this. Um, but we want to have, we want to get a couple thousand accounts using across Australia.
Well, I I think that, I don't think that's going to be a drama, because as I said, the, um. Uh, I just found out, um, Michael Jeffries is going to be interviewed and fit in review about this asset protection succession. But it's now started to get out. So even DBA is having like a. Two or three hour session on succession planning, the charging webinars for. So it's normally, when you find something like this, it takes. A while for it to go, but I've found there's a huge speeding up in this space. Uh, which is is good. That's why everyone needs to get in and action. Um, otherwise, before you know it, someone else is going to be doing it to your clients.
Hundred percent. They'll jump in and and, yeah. So look, there, there's some of the tools that we've got in change GPS. I know some of you using them, some of you might be interested. So just go in face, send an email, info@changegps.com.au, come to ZeroCon, have a chat with us. We do fortnightly web events as well. Uh, but everything we do, we're a separate business to Lightyear, but we're. Grant and I like this. Um, we weaponize you for the front end. We help you to explain to your clients. And I'll give you an example, just so you can understand how we do these things. VPP client email. VPP stands for value, plan and price. This is what I've developed at Change GPS to help explain to your clients why they should spend money with you. So let's have a look at, this is one that goes through the Bosnack situation. Urgent action required, your family home may be at risk. So, John, you've asked our email. Yes, our emails are different to Lightyear, because we come from. From, I suppose, the VPP approach, we put these together. To be an, enable you to sell things from Lightyear docs. For many years, our advice to all clients involved businesses has been put the ownership of your family home in a non-working or non-risky partner's name. This has provided great asset protection. However, a recent federal court case has changed laws significantly and your family home may now be at risk. This email is explained in more detail how we can help you and why you'll be better off. We go through the value, how we can save a million bucks worth of equity, the plan, what we're going to do, the price, thousand dollars for the letter advice. And the advice is the letter, which is just showing. The content in here, this document about changing about, you know, your family home at risk and the protector. This is a small price to pay to ensure the equity in your home of this amount is protected. Next steps, let us know if you're interested. We'll get the ball rolling. So using that value, plan, price. Once you explain the value and the plan involved, and then the price, it's such an important thing there.
Oh, it's so important. And particularly with the Boesnake, I mean, we're talking about it before, how many accountants are exposed out there? And and you know, you don't, you you don't know, you can always argue, well, the law was the law at that time. But now there's a fair, full federal court case. I mean, you've got, you've got no choice. It it has to go around. And that case will actually reverberate in family provisions, uh, divorces, it's going to reverberate everywhere.
Did I show that email? Was I showing the screen when I had that?
No, you're showing us your beautiful melon.
Sorry, everyone, let me just. I I just looked at it, I thought it wasn't showing up there. Let me just show the email so you can just take it in, everyone. There's the email there. There's the value. Goes and explains how they're going to be better, the plan, the P part, and then P the price. Now, we use that VPP step with everything in change GPS. And to give you an example for the accountants out there, we've got client emails. VPP, look at all of these. The same approach. Year end game plan, what to do, you know, ATO tax debt repayment, business structure advice, director ID. State painting offer, fee code for small clients, helping clients during COVID. No risk tax free strategy, uh, meaning duplex property developments, a template tax forecasting. And a new one we've got here. Expanded for repricing your clients. Now, this is just insane. I'm only going to give you a snippet of this. But this is so powerful. If you want to reprice your clients, full transparent pricing, show. Last year and this year, and why has the price changed? We use this, every one of our clients didn't lose one, increased our prices by between fifteen and twenty percent across the board for everyone. And that's, that's phenomenal work. That's not for new entities added on. So this is the sort of stuff that we've had, we've got in change GPS. If you're not using it, we'd love to chat with you. Um, because we can really help, um, you know, empower your firm to. Charge more, explain your value better to your clients, so your clients love you more. And reduce the time that you spend working so you got more time back with the family.
Hmm. Absolutely. And I think it it does work. A- as I said, we've got. Um, look, I've done up a few emails which you've seen up on our, our site, but they're just basic compared to the. Uh, detailed stuff with Tim and, you know, I just let Tim and his crew go off and do all that, that front end. Um, and we spend time in the the backend. Uh, again, last year, Tim, uh, brought, um. To me, the idea that, um, there's a private binding ruling flying around and where you could have your family home inside your. Uh, trust, your family protection trust, and then. Um, effectively utilizing a lease, you'd still get the principal place of residence exemption, at least a large part of it. So. It was funny because then I had someone else come on board and say, look. Uh, we want you to give us a bit more, to give us a letter of advice and do the documentation for us, but it's going to be exclusive. And I said, well, no. It doesn't work that way with us. Um, so we're pretty close to actually finalizing that. So we've done research. We've got a very. Detailed letter of advice, but you know, that's that stuff, you know, he's ready to go. And again, it's another fantastic package. Um, for you to add to your suite, obviously, Tim, and and for everyone else to to go out and and market because. Ideally, it's best to have everything in rather than stuffing out.
And look, one of the things we're working on as well, we've got a product called Engage. Which, um, it's it's a very simple, straightforward engagement tool where you can actually create a new engagement. Um, and and there's a lot of updates and things coming from this soon, but you're about to select a client from XBM. Select the entity type and the service item, okay, and your financial statements, different pricing options. You can build this up super quickly. And have a beautiful compliant engagement document. But what we're going to have with this is, you know, once the client wants that sort of thing, a- again, just an automatic feed through into, um. Lightyear to be able to, you know, deploy jobs and do these sorts of things. And every one of the grants services that he's got in Lightyear. What we're doing is we're building the service item. So, for example, like if we're going, I'm just going to find, um, trust establishment, okay. So if you're going to set up a trust, great. So we've got, I mean, we're expanding these things out, but all the service descriptions are in there. See that? And these will flow through the invoices and zero and other things like that. But everything that Grant is doing, we're going to build a service description. So if you want to go and offer something to someone. You don't have to go and think about it. We've got everything done here, ready for you straight away. Um, I don't, I don't think we've put protector in here yet. No. Got a whole range of other things, but you'll see, we'll make it super easy for you to go and make these recommendations to your clients. Few other surprises we're adding in Engage as well. So again. Um, everything that Grant's doing, we want to make it easy for you to recommend to your clients. So if your client needs a protector, you don't have to think about it. Go and put their name in there, choose a protector, bang, send it out within two minutes. Give them a quote through here and away you go.
So do you want to just, um, explain the difference between Engage and Quickfee?
Okay, so Engage, that's engagement software. So a lot of people would have heard of Go Proposal or Ignition. Fantastic. This is, uh, cheaper. It doesn't have all the bells and whistles. It gives you just really what you need. And so when you have a professional body review, well, they can come along, you can see here when a client would have signed off manually or digitally. When you send the proposal out, so you've got everything listed that they can see, everything that you've actually proposed, you can download reports. Uh, or you can just, um, send out your engagements. We're doing a lot of work in this. We're spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on it to, um. Basically give it some new stuff that I won't talk about here. But it's going to blow your minds. Probably February next year, it's going to be revolutionary, nothing like it worldwide. And, yeah, it's going to have every link, everything that Grant's doing in Lightyear docs. We're going to have those engagement parts built in. So you don't have to create the words. It's just going to go through seamless. These are working together. So Grant's working on the strategies and the docs. We're working on the part for enabling you to talk to your clients and engage them, get your client to pay you, and then away you go with Lightyear.
That's perfect. I'm seamless. It's the only way. I mean, the, the, the quality and the quantity of work you can get out. Compared, I mean, how do you, you've had some bad experience with lawyers, um, and I'm sure everyone has. Um, uh, obviously, people take your letter to lawyers and stuff like that, but I I find that. When people do, I say, yeah, go for it. And more often than not, you don't hear, they they say, well, I gave it to the lawyer six months ago. I haven't heard anything yet. Because they just don't understand.
I yesterday, um, did an asset protection discussion with. Partners referred through to me. He's an earth mover and his wife is a litigation lawyer. Okay, and she had to, she sat at the front of Supreme Court Brisbane, had a phone, you know, she was in the middle of a case and. I think she's trying to work out who's this, who's this accountant, trying to explain all this stuff. So, um. I put up a, a special diagram we've got which goes through. Risk, um, non estate assets and estate assets and how the structure would work. And I think she must fell off a chair. And I read them through and said, right, so family home, joint names, okay, so explain about the protector. And you could see, you know, and straight away she goes, okay, well, oh, she's the, this is fantastic. And but she's. She attacks these structures. And the first thing she says, okay, so what we have to do is document our solvency. I said, we're one step ahead of you. That's the first part we do. I took her through it. She could, and she attacks these things. And she said, Tim, that's brilliant. I've never seen anything like it. And we're setting this up for her, a litigation lawyer. And she's out there fighting these things. And she didn't say to me, Tim, you're not a lawyer, you can't do this. Now, if there's someone that would give a crack on this, it'd be a litigation lawyer. They're the ones that'd get kicked off. And but she could see, I'm here with her and her husband's best interest at heart, trying to help them to protect their. Hard earned family assets. So, um, again, you know. If you ever have any issues or hassles, talk to Grant, Tony, myself. But, yeah, we, this is so important just to get out there. And and look, the documents and things that we put together, I show Grant, I show Tony, I'll get a different second set of eyes and vice versa. We just collaborate on these things to make sure that none of us has missed anything.
That's fantastic. Um, we're probably almost at the end of our time, but look, it's, I really appreciate you and also, uh, Matt. Matt, are you there still or?
Yes, mate.
Hey, do you want to do any, uh, closing comments for people? Because you've been a year into this. Um, uh, just some closing comments for people. One is that they've got to do the quiz.
Look, it's. If you just purely look at, at what it's cost me to be a member. And the money I've got back from offering the service to my clients. Un- unquestionably, unquestionably, it's an absolute no brainer. To to jump on board and become, you know, become a member. The, the trick to it, if I'm going to be brutally honest about this, is to be. Confident in yourself. In how you're going to. Pitch the product to the client. Um, I come from a selling background, so, you know, I I I was always confident, you know, I had a good product and I could sell it. That's the trick. And I suppose if I'm going to put my my sales hat on, and I I don't like using that word in this environment. I, I suppose the the first thing I did was I actually did the products for myself.
Exactly. That's the best.
And and kind of treated myself and and, you know, this was quite silly and and I I do this all the time, usually when I'm stuck with traffic. I actually sell and run the patter. To myself in the car, pretending it's a client. It's a stupid thing, but I got taught this when I was nineteen.
Right, yeah.
I I I, you know, I was platform speaking, you know, at twenty three, making a living selling from the platform. And my mentor at the time. He he said, look, everyone will tell you pitch everyone naked and stand in front of a mirror naked. He says, what a proper shit. He says, when you're on your own in the car. Sell the product to yourself and understand what the patter is.
Yeah.
And if you're confident enough in. In what it is that you are selling, so e- even if you just take the, a successive director product. Be com- comfortable and confident in what that product is. And your client can't help but mirroring your confidence. And that's why I don't like to use the word sell, because it it isn't selling. It's like. If you drop dead, what's going to happen with your business? And how are your wife and family going to have some money? That's not a sell.
Hmm.
That's just simply saying, this is what's going to happen if we don't do this, let's do it now.
Hmm.
So, once you're confident in that, all of this stuff just simply flows. And and like I said before, when I onboard my clients. They don't have a choice anymore. If they are the sole director of a company, part of coming on board is we are going to have a successive director. If they have a trust and it's not a current trust. It gets changed. It's just part of what we now offer. And my new clients don't know any different.
Hmm. Actually, can I just ask another question to you, Matt?
Yeah, man.
Going back maybe two years ago, in, if you can put yourself back there and look at now. Um, how more passionate about, are you about what you're doing and looking to the future than you were then?
Oh, I I love this shit. I really do. It's, it's brilliant. And 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 it's. It's come, it it's, my passion has been reignited.
Yeah.
Sadly enough, with the death of one of my clients.
Hmm.
And and, you know, he, her, the the widow's brother rang me up and he says, dude, what the hell? And so, you know, quite confidently, I was able to go and sit down with them. And say, look, e- everything's done, you know, w- we're all here. Um, so. It's and 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 because I love this shit and I get excited about it, my client's just like, oh, shit, I want this stuff. I don't know what it is, but. Why, you're excited? So let's do it. But it it becomes. It it becomes really important as 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 an accountant or as a financial advisor, as whatever it is that's on on calls now. It becomes so important that this is offered to our clients because we owe it to them.
Exactly.
To be able to put them in a position so that. If, when someone does drop dead, you're not freaking out as the accountant going, oh crap, what the hell do we do now? So you, and you know, she was, he was insured for a couple of million dollars. The family will get on very, very well. Um, you know, we're just putting together the 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 final tax returns for him as we speak. Um, so I I love it. I I get really excited about it. My clients. Uh, you know, thoroughly enjoy the service we provide them. It's why we're able to extract a lot of money out of our clients because it's a very, very valuable service that we provide. And it's a undue, uh, unquestionable value to them. Um, and, you know, I I will change my patter a little bit now, just tell the story about my client who died.
Hmm. You know? That's it. And everyone can now tell the, everyone can now tell the story of Matt's client who died.
Yeah, what you're talking about there, Matt, is so important, you know, it's just for every account out there, just to really appreciate it because. You know, Matt, you're happy to charge big bucks and get paid for it. And so am I, because we frigging deserve it, because we are doing.
Yeah, question.
It's, if you didn't do it for these clients and they die. It's a crap fight as the family fights after the money, or the money's going in the wrong direction, or gets taxed the wrong way. And all these bad things happen, which is going to cost the client. Anyway, it is going to cost them a bucket load. Now, if you charge hard, of course you should be paid for that. Like, I've got, I've got a client who's a dentist, he's making eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Oh, he shouldn't be charging that much. He should lower his prices and only earn a hundred and fifty thousand a year. So he can afford his services. No, accountants, we think the wrong way around. If you're not making half a mil to a million bucks a year with what you do, there's a problem. And we're here to help you fix that situation.
And it's tax deductible to your client as well, so they get it back in. And it's tax deductible to your client as well, so they get it back anyway, so.
Yeah, and I, I think the important thing is also the, um. Well, it's at the start of the curve, like, you're not going to make a huge amount of money in SMSFs anymore, because it's simply, the curve has already gone past. They are at the forefront now. Now, if every accounting firm, or fifty percent of accounting firms in Australia were doing what we're doing. You're not going to be able to charge your prices, you aren't. You're just very lucky that something inside you said, well, this is the thing that I want to do. Though while it's on the, while it, supply and demand. While there's a huge demand and there's not a supply of people doing that, you can obviously get premium prices. Now, that'll turn around and it could be five, it could be ten years, but the main thing is action, action, action and, and get in, get in to be the first one.
Hundred percent.
Cool. Okay, well, we might wrap it up there for everyone. And thank you very much, Matt, and thank you very much, Tim.
Absolutely.
Do you want to give a bit of a plug for your session on Monday, Tim?
Yeah, look, we're going to do a session on asset protection, um. A bit of a primer from accounts perspective, coming off and protecting a lot of other things on Monday as well. So, um. Yeah, if you, uh, if you're interested in that, I'm going to put our email address.
Chuck it in the chat. And again, a good thing is, it's, it'll be great for all of you to go and jump on there. And then you'll say, well, I know that idea, I know that idea. Or, yeah, I can do that. So that, that then gives you the impetus for that.
And Grant, um, you're free to come on Monday for a few minutes, are you?
Yeah, absolutely. Of course, again, you know, you know me, if I can talk about this stuff, I'll do it all day long. So look, I really appreciate all the stuff, uh, the time you've given today, Tim, and, you know, it, it's been absolutely fantastic. It's been a great three days, everyone. Today has been really bringing it all home for us. And look, a- as we go down the track, make sure that you, um. Uh, get your quiz going. That'll be out tomorrow. Remember, it's two screens. Follow the book, the answers are there. Get that away, become a board certified advisor in the next week or two. Um, and then from there, I mean, if you really want to go to, to the next level. Um, you make sure you come over to Fiji, where you actually become part of the, the whole group that are really, you know, starting and, and, you know. Uh, premiering this or pioneering this in Australia. So thank you very much for everyone attending, um, and that's the final end of the conference.
Thanks, Grant. Thanks, everyone. All the best. And Brandon, a pause for Grant Abbott.
Oh, thank you.
He's a legend. Real privilege to work with him. So it's, you're the one behind all this. So, uh, well done, Grant. We really, really appreciate it, but of all the accountants around Australia.
Oh, thank you. Thanks, guys.